Thank you for joining us this evening. My name is Bob Zajak. I'll be the moderator tonight. Joining me is Tim Pyatt. Tim is the attorney for the Board of Trustees. He is one of the chief architects of the Pension Rescue Plan, along with the trustees and along with an actuary, Kathy Garrity, who is here also. The actuary is the person who plugs all of the numbers and options into computer programs and determines what will and won't work when it comes to saving the pension plan.
What are your responsibilities?
Pardon me?
What are your responsibilities?
A few words about Tim's responsibilities. His practice is focused on pension plans and government regulations that affect pension plans. As the trustee's attorney, he makes sure that your plan complies with all applicable laws and that the trustees are meeting their fiduciary responsibilities. And what that means is that he actually is there to protect you and to protect the plan. Now, we know you've been waiting a long time to learn about the fate of your pension. We appreciate your patience during the development of what we believe to be the best option possible for your rescue plan. As we go through this presentation, I'm going to ask that you hold questions until the end, give us a chance to get through all the material. It may answer some of your questions. And then, we hope to be wrapped up by about 7:30 tonight. We'll give you time for questions and comments. If there are any questions, somebody wants to hold till after 7:30, the library doesn't close till 8:00. You may have something you want to ask Tim privately, and he'll stay until 8 o'clock to answer individual questions. So why we're here is this: it's your pension, it's your vote. We're at a crossroad, and you have two directions that you can go. You can do nothing, and the Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation, the PBGC, will ultimately step in and take over your pension plan. And the other option is to accept the rescue plan that we're proposing tonight, and that should ensure that your plan survives. Now, the professionals who developed this plan and your trustees believe that accepting this plan will save it, and it's in your best interest to accept it. But ultimately, it's your choice. You'll determine whether or not this is accepted by your vote. Here's an overview of the presentation tonight. We'll talk about why the rescue plan is necessary. We'll give you some background that will tell you how we got where we are. We'll talk about the PBGC, which many people believe to be an option, and Kappa. We'll talk about Central States. I'm sure you've all are aware and have followed what's happened with Central States. We'll talk about the lessons that we've learned from what happened with Central States and how we've applied that to the rescue plan. We'll talk about the rescue plan itself. We'll give you some examples of how it will affect individuals. And we'll talk about the next steps and the timeline, and then we'll take time then to answer your questions. So right now, your pension plan has about $14 million in it, and it's paying out about $3 million every year. Now, there is income coming in. It's your contributions as well as the interest that the plan is earning, but very clearly the cash flow situation is completely in the negative, and the projection is that your plan will run out of money in about 10 years. Now, this is a very unpleasant situation that's been developing for decades, really, and I'm going to let Tim explain the background on what got your plan to the point that it is now.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Again, my name is Tim Pyatt. I'm the attorney for the fund. I'm going to go through these things. Hopefully, I don't go too fast, but this is very important for everyone to remember how we got to this point. First, the pension plan had a surplus in the 1990s. At the time, the federal government did not want pension plans to have a surplus. They were worried that pension plans were going to be tax havens because money that comes into the pension plan is tax deductible and tax-free while it's in the plan. So there was a concern that large employers were going to use these type of plans as a tax haven. So in the early 2000s, the government required pensions to increase benefits rather than save surplus funds. What I like to say is, the government said, "Heaven forbid we have a rainy day fund." If everyone remembers, in the late 90s, we had the tech stocks were taking off. Plans were getting returns of 25%, 30% per year in their investments. So therefore, the plan's assets were going up and up, and there was work available. We weren't quite in the anti-union environment that we are today. As the plan got closer and closer to being 100%, 101%, 102% funded, the government said, "You cannot have a surplus. You must increase benefits." So a lot of you probably remember how, over a four- or five-year period, the benefits went from 3.3% of contributions to 3.8% of contributions to 4.0% of contributions because the government was telling us, "Keep increasing your liabilities. Keep taking on more debt." We were saying, "What if this doesn't continue? Shouldn't we have some money set aside?" And the government, being the government, said, "No." You'll remember, we had 13 checks for a while, where retirees were getting 13 checks because we had to increase our liabilities. Okay. The problem with that is, the rules at the time, in the late 90s, the early 2000s, all the way up until 2006, were, actually up until 2014, were, "As soon as you increase that liability, as soon as you increase that accrued benefit, you can never take it away." So therefore, it's a cross-your-fingers approach. We are crossing our fingers and hoping that this plan keeps making this kind of investment return, that this work never disappears, that large employers don't go out of business. So that's what happened in the late 90s, early 2000s. Well, the early 2000s, the tech bubble bursts. Now, we're not getting those huge investment returns anymore. Now, we start having an environment of anti-union thoughts. We have, the baby boomers are starting to retire more. In 2000, actives, there were two times as many people actively working as there were retirees. Currently, it is totally the other way, and I think it's actually a little more than that right now. It's totally flipped. 2008, we all know what happened in 2008 with the investments and the work environment. Now, in 2006, the government actually passed a law called the Pension Protection Act, and all that said, for our purposes, is, "In order to be this overfunded before we start punishing you, you have to be ridiculously overfunded." We're talking 150% to 200% funded, which no plan ever gets to that point because as you get more and more funded, you're going to naturally increase your liabilities, but make sure that you can pay for it. If the rules that came out in 2006 had been in place in 2000, we likely wouldn't be sitting here today. Well, now, back in 2011, the prevailing wage laws in Ohio changed. You couldn't get as many prevailing wage jobs, which for construction trades, that's a bread and butter, doing some schoolwork, doing some public projects. That changed in 2011. We have more people retiring. Over the last few years, we've had some investment returns that weren't quite as high because the investment market just isn't as good as it was in the past. So you see, in the last piece here, today, there are fewer active union workers and more retirees. Now, your plan is not the only plan that is in this situation. There are currently about 50 other plans across the country, and more every year, that are falling into the same status and the same problems that you guys are in. So we are not alone. This is a global or a countrywide environment. So that's how we got to this point, where we are right now.
The PBGC, the Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation, would take over your fund if you do not vote for the rescue plan. However, this government agency that was created by ERISA, the Employment Retirement Income Security Act, created to protect your benefits, is likely going to fail. There's a big "but" in the success of the PBGC and in the benefit of having them take over your plan. First, when they assume payments, benefit cuts are made for nearly all members automatically, and those benefit cuts are far deeper than what we're going to be proposing in the rescue plan. It covers currently about 200 pension plans with 1.5 million people, and as Tim said, there are many pension plans right now that are in critical and declining status. You're not alone. So by the PBGC's own calculation, it has a 90% chance of being out of money in 12 years, which is right about the same time that we would be projecting that your plan runs out of money.
Now, some people, I know a lot of you have heard about this Central States Pension Plan that got a lot of press, and one thing that went along with the Central States Plan was this Keep Our Pensions Protection Act. I'm going to call it the Bernie Sanders Bill because he's the one who introduced it. And I'm not going to get into too much detail on it. What you need to know is if anybody comes to you and talks about the Bernie Sanders Act or Kappa, "Well, this will save our plan." It will not. Here's why, very quickly. It was introduced into the United States Senate in June of 2015. There has been exactly one action on the bill since 2015, and that was, the bill was introduced. It went to a committee, it has not even been talked about. Bernie Sanders has alluded to the fact that the only reason he introduced this was to say that he introduced it, because it had to do with Central States, and Central States is a huge, huge plan, and he wanted to look good for the Teamsters, because that's what Central States was. So the Bernie Sanders Act is never going to go anywhere, but even if by some wild stretch of the imagination, it did, it wouldn't even apply to the Brick Layer 7 Plan. All it would do is it would allow plans to take advantage of something called a partition, which we do not even qualify for, because before you can do a partition, you have to make the maximum cuts that you can under the law. We are not making the maximum cuts under the law. And the pension troubles, in large part, have to be due to bankruptcies or what are called withdrawn employers. We do not have that in this plan. So from a very broad stance, if anyone ever says to you, "Well, what about Kappa? What about the Bernie Sanders Bill?", it will not apply to this plan. You can just ignore any of that. So this, it sounds good, but it's not going to help the Brick Layer 7 Pension Plan.
So the PBGC, which is already $50 billion in debt, $52 billion, I think, in debt, probably isn't a safe option, and Kappa isn't an option at all. Now, we talked about the Central States Pension Fund, and you know, the US Department of State recently denied their proposal. Federal mediator Kenneth Feinberg gave these reasons for the denial, that the proposed cuts weren't equitable among members. The plan wasn't explained in an easily understandable way. It was actually so confusing that I don't think it could have been explained in an easily understandable way, and the projected return on investment of 7.5% was too optimistic. Now, we've looked at the reasons for the denial, and we've adjusted your rescue plan accordingly. To address the reasons the Fed rejected their plan, your rescue plan has been created to be as equitable as possible. We're going to make sure that everyone understands, not only the plan or the proposal, but also the entire process that we're going to be going through. And that kind of begins with what you see at the very bottom corner there on the left. We've, I think, today taken a website live that you can refer to over the next year-plus during this whole process. As the plan winds through the legal process, we'll be able to keep you up to date on everything that's happening with the plan, and it's also going to be a resource that if at any point you're saying, "Gosh, what did they say is going to happen?", you can go back and it'll be there on the website. And we've made sure that our outlook is realistic, our return on investment outlook is realistic.
So would we, over the last nine, 10 months, have worked with the Board of Trustees and the other plan professionals to create your rescue plan, really what our focus is and what our focus has always been, and it's because that's what our focus has to be, is the participants. How can we save this plan? We are going to try to distribute and make sure that we're restoring balance in this plan, make it self-sustaining so this plan can continue. We will exceed any PBGC, the Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation, guarantee. Now, along those lines, the Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation has a very strict formula that they use. If they loan money to your plan, or take what we call "take over your plan," they say, "Here's how much you can pay," and that's for everybody. And we'll get into a little bit about why that's so important as well. But our rescue plan exceeds their guarantee. And we want to make sure that we are encouraging people to continue participating in this plan. We want to make this plan as attractive as possible for people to stay in the plan, for people to want to come into this plan, because as you get younger guys in, you get some more money in, that's how you can help turn this plan around. So that's what our rescue plan does. Now, the rescue plan, the way we figured it out is, it's going to be based on 1.3% of your total lifetime contributions. We will look at your contributions, multiply that by 1.3%, and there is your new benefit. Okay? Now, I spoke with a gentleman earlier. Anybody who is age 80 or over, as of May 31, 2017, so next year, their benefit will not be cut at all, zero cut. That is under the law. Now, remember how I talked about the Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation? If the PBGC takes over this plan, they can and will cut benefits for people that are over age 80. They do not have these age restrictions. If anybody is receiving disability payments through this plan, not Social Security disability, but Brick Layer 7 disability payments, they cannot be cut one cent. They stay exactly the same. Anybody who is between the ages of 75 and 80 have a tiered cut. They're not going to get the maximum amount or the amount that they would have been cut if they were less than age 75. So there are built-in protections to this plan. In addition, it is better than the PBGC guarantee in all cases. The PBGC guarantee is an amount, a set amount. Under the law and under our plan, we cannot go below 110% of that number. So everybody's benefit in here will be better than what they would get if the PBGC took over this plan, by law. So that's the way our rescue plan looks. I think this is a really important one to see. Nearly half of people in this plan will receive no cut whatsoever, nearly half. 18% of people, another 26% of people have a 30% or less cut. Now, please, don't get us wrong. We understand the magnitude of this. We understand, and that's what we're trying to keep in mind. But I think this is really important to see how many people are not even going to see a cent cut off of their benefit. So what we did is we pulled together some samples to give you an idea. So this is a retiree who is 63 years old and had 29 years of service, and is currently receiving a benefit of $1,574 per month. If you vote to approve the rescue plan, this individual's benefit will drop from $1,574 per month to $1,140 per month. Understandably so, that's a hit. But if the Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation takes over your plan, this individual will receive $1,037 per month. The next one is a widow, somebody receiving a survivor benefit, currently receiving $854. Under the rescue plan, they would get $787, as compared to if it went to the PBGC, they would get $715. Somebody who is inactive, 59 years old, maybe worked in the trade for a while, left the trade, but does get a benefit, they're entitled to $288. Under the rescue plan, they would get $236 per month, and under the PBGC, they would get $215. An active person, 51 years old, with 11 years of service, currently getting or entitled to $526 per month. Under the rescue plan, you'll see no benefit cut whatsoever for this individual, whereas if we went to the PBGC, that person would see a benefit cut down to $393. And if this individual works another 11 years, which brings this person to 62 years old, which is the plan's normal retirement age, that person would be entitled to $800 a month. And that's, I want to take a moment to make sure that everybody understands that these benefit cuts are going to be based on what your accrued benefit is as of May 1, 2016. Okay? If you keep working in the industry, you continue accruing a benefit, and that's going to be added on top of that. So that's why it's important for people that are active currently, and a lot of the young guys, to continue working because your benefit is going to go up. For example, 32-year-old with seven years of service, current accrued benefit's $142. Under the rescue plan, no cut whatsoever. They're continued to be entitled to $142 a month. If the plan goes to PBGC, they only get $126 a month. And if this individual works another 30 years, they get the $800 a month, so they can continue accruing a benefit. So where do we go from here? This is the timeline. We are currently planning on filing an application with the United States Treasury Department at the end of June. Soon thereafter, within a week, early July, first two weeks in July, everybody will be receiving a letter with an individualized estimate of what your benefit is versus what your benefit is going to be if the benefit suspension goes through. Now, it's going to be an estimate, but it is going to be pretty close to what that, the amount that it's actually going to be. So you're going to get something in the mail that's going to be very specific to you. The Treasury Department then has 225 days to respond. Now, with Central States, what they did is they waited the full 225 days. If the Treasury Department waits a full 225 days to either approve or deny our application, that puts us in early February. And the reason that's important is, the minute we find out, or the minute Treasury say they approve our application, it immediately starts the clock for the voting process. We have to conduct a vote within 30 days. So, a couple of points. One, our hope is, when we get notice from the Treasury Department, "Hey, Tim, your application has been approved," we are immediately going to turn out a letter to everybody that received the letter here, and everybody else who isn't here that received the letter, setting up another town hall meeting so we can revisit all these points, answer any new questions, update you on what's going on, make sure that everybody is on the same page. Now, it's going to be a quick turnaround because we only have 30 days to work with. So we're likely going to say, "Hey, in two weeks, we're going to be meeting again." We're hoping it's going to be here. That's totally up to the library's availability. On a side note, if you see anybody from the library, please say thank you for having, they gave us this room for free. We are paying nothing for this room from the library, so show your appreciation to them, too. If the application is approved through the voting process, May 1, 2017 will be the first time you see that reduced amount, as we just talked about. Okay? Now, the voting process itself is, the Treasury Department handles that. We and the Board of, I and the Board of Trustees and nobody else has anything to do with it. We do not touch those. You will get something in the mail giving you a unique identifier number, 1234, 456, whatever it's going to be, and you will either vote online or over the phone using that unique identifier number, so no one will have any idea how you voted. All we will know is who voted yes, who voted no, or who didn't vote. That's it. If it's approved, then the rescue plan goes into effect May 1 of 2017. And another thing I think you need, I want to make sure I point out, because we are trying to be very crystal clear and transparent with this, not voting is the exact same thing as voting yes for the rescue plan. So again, just because that's been a point of contention with some congressmen, not voting is the same as voting yes. So this is the timeline of how things are going to progress. What happens if it doesn't pass, or what happens if the Treasury Department does what they did with Central States and they deny our application? At this point next year, this additional year of instability would prove disastrous. We may be unable to draft a rescue plan that could save this plan. And even if we could, the 1.3% of contributions is no longer in play. We're going to have to make the benefit cuts even more significant. So we may end up having to do what Central States did when their benefit application was denied and say, "There's nothing more we can do. We're just going to keep going until the plan runs out of money," and the PBGC steps in. One thing I think we need to remember, too, Central States' plan is a multi-billion-dollar plan. If the PBGC takes over the Central States' plan, it is unlikely that the PBGC will be able to take over any other plan. So there is a possibility that in 10 to 12 years, right around the same time that we are running out of money in this plan if we don't adopt this rescue plan, that there's not even going to be a PBGC there to give us any kind of backstop. So this is just something that I want you guys to remember.
And the numerous legislators have said that there will be no bailout for the PBGC. There is no intention to give them any additional money. Now, we are ready to ask questions. I'll ask you to either raise your hand or stand up, and I'll repeat your question to be sure everybody can hear it, and then Tim will answer it. Yes? You, go ahead.
If you went out on disability, there will be no cuts, correct?
If you are receiving a disability pension from this plan, correct. If you are receiving, if you went out because you were disabled and you're receiving Social Security disability, but you're receiving just a normal pension from the Brick Layer 7 Plan, then yes, that can be cut, but it's a specific, it's a specific type of benefit, which is the disability payment from this plan.
Well, how, how did you get, if you went out on disability, how did you weren't getting a disability pension from the Brick Layer 7?
She asked. Oh, go ahead.
The question was, how did you get a disability benefit if you weren't getting, how did you go out on disability if you weren't getting a disability benefit from Local 7? Under the plan, there are specific provisions, and the disability benefit has not been available for several years. There are not many people who are currently on a disability pension from this plan, but there was a specific set of criteria that you had to meet. You had to apply for the disability benefit. You had to show that you were incapable of doing the work because of your disability, and that's how you got the disability pension.
Well, I don't know what happened, you know, in 2005. I mean, he wasn't told about any disability from Local 7. When he went out on disability, was that an effect then?
Yes, that was an effect at the time.
Nobody told us that there was any disability from, it was called a disability from Local 7. Because the international has given him his full pension because he went out on disability. So why didn't Local 7 give him a disability then?
Okay, and?
He had all the documentation, everything.
Well, I can't speak to that. I don't know what happened back in 2005. The question is, why didn't Local 7 do what the international did? The international said, "You can go out on a disability with your full pension." Why didn't the local 7? And Social Security did, too. I can't speak to why that, why that didn't happen back in 2005. I don't know. And if you guys want to come talk to me afterwards, we could talk about that a little more in detail, if that's okay with you. That's a good, that's a, that's a good question. I just can't speak to that right now, but we'll catch up after.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, I know, what, how far out is this perspective going to last, in the last 20 years? I mean, what kind of benefit are you guys talking about, the back on return versus, you know, the return on the investments that you put the money into? I mean, if you have 7.5% or whatever, you have to consider it's too high. So you're looking at a 2% return and keep the fund going for another 30, 40 years?
Okay, the question is, how far out are we looking in the development of the rescue plan, and what impact might different return on investments have on the plan?
Well, certainly, the more we have, the higher investment return, the better the plan is going to do. Now, we have to understand, too, that Now, we have to understand too, that we still have a lot of people who are owed benefits. But adopting this rescue plan is going to save the plan really for an indefinite amount of time. We're looking at at least thirty years, at least thirty years, assuming we keep making, we, we are using a six-and-a-quarter-percent investment return?
First ten years.
For the first ten years. We actually talked to our investment people. They went through, did a big study to figure out what is a reasonable investment return. But if we adopt this rescue plan and we get six-and-a-quarter-percent each year for the next ten years, and then seven-and-a-half or seven-and-three-quarters after that, this plan will be able to go at least thirty years, which is as far as we really can predict with the modeling that we use.
Yes?
Yes, say, and that's what we talked about with the one slide with the, with the lady who is the widow. Spouses are treated as if retirees, so if they are getting a benefit, then their cut, their benefit is going to be cut as well.
Thirteen percent, if you could get a hundred percent retirement, is that still in effect?
Yes, that, that's still in effect.
Sir, you had a question?
Yeah. What was the plan made a million and a half last year in profit for, you know, an extent of a million and a half in expenses?
The question, the question is, we brought in a million and a half, but we spent a million and a half. We actually spent a little bit more than that. The amount of benefits that we have to pay every single year that we are required to pay is more than what we're bringing in.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
But that's a million and a half last year.
Yes, yeah, we're.
Expenses, everything.
Yeah, a super majority of that money is the, a great, great amount of that money is benefits being paid to retirees and the liability of what is going to be owed. But that money that's going out is what's given, going to the retirees.
Barely even the last year.
Right, yeah. We have to have good investment return and good hours just to break even, and even that's pretty tough to do.
Have you calculated this, did you figure it for future contributions? Were there certain rates that you figured that in?
We use the current rate as of May, May one of two thousand and sixteen, the current rate. So as the contribution rate goes up, we're going to get more money coming into the plan. I'm sorry, the question was, do we, what, what contribution rate did we factor in with this? We factored in the current contribution rate.
Not along with any future?
No, as money comes in, if, if the contribution rate increases, that's just going to help the plan recover faster. Another question in the back there? No, we, we have to keep, we have to keep doing this. Every year, we look at these numbers. We're not going to be coming back here every single year, but every year, we look at the numbers. The question was, what happens if we don't get the contribution increase? We don't have new members coming in? Is it going to guarantee for thirty years? First off, we can't guarantee anything because we're relying on investments and we're relying on ours, which we might know, we got a pretty good idea, we're going to have so many hours this year, but who knows what jobs are going to come up next year? We feel we have to, for lack of a better word, take a very educated, reasonable guess as to what's going to happen, and that's what we're required to do under law. And we feel the way we have it right now is a doable goal, a reachable goal, to help ensure. Now, if next year, the, we have another two thousand and eight and the stock market drops out, maybe not. It's impossible to guarantee anything, just because we're working with a lot of moving parts. In the back?
Doug Mark, I think everybody should know we're basically paying out two dollars for the dollar companies. Now, you're paying out two million dollars for retirees, you're bringing in a million dollars, so that's, that's our problem. I just want to let you know.
Okay. Thank you. And what Doug said was just, we're paying out about two million and bringing in about a million, like we had talked about earlier. We're just, we're running at a deficit.
What you get from one or the other state, what you're going to get after, is that ever going to lower again?
Possibly, only, but, but if things continue to get, or to continue to decrease, we think this plan here is going to make our plan flat instead of down. Because the government, instead of saying you could make a cut to maybe make your plan rebound a little bit, so maybe take a deeper cut, but just for a short amount of time, and then you can start rebounding. The plan said you have to make the cut just enough to save the plan, to avoid running out of money. So we, we have it so it's flat, and that's as far as we can go. So you have another two thousand and eight, or you have a terrible year with ours, it's possible we would have to do something more in the future. But again, that's, it's dependent on those other factors.
If it does increase, and you ask, will it support it up, will Jackson increase it also?
What we would want to do is, we would certainly not want to jump the gun to, hey, we had a little bit of an increase, let's immediately start putting money back in. Okay? What we would want to do is, we would want to be smart, we would want to be, look to the future, but when we would reach a point that we would say, and trust me, it's always going to be on the front of our minds, what is that point going to be? And we don't know it yet, where we can say, "Okay, we can start bumping these benefits back up. We need to start getting these people their money." I, I can't speak to when that's going to be because we just don't know what that's going to look like. But over the next several years, if we start getting some nice returns, we start building this plan back up, and we start getting to eighty, eighty-five percent funded, trust me, in our heads, we're going to be thinking, how are we going to get this money back to the participants and to the retirees?
And there are rules about sharing it equitably?
Right, and there's rules about sharing. Thank you, Kathy, the funds actuary. She says, "There's rules about sharing it equitably." So we couldn't just say, "Hey, we're doing better. We're going to give all the money to the active guys." Or, "Hey, we're getting a lot of money. We're going to give all the money to the retired guys." No, we have to share that equitably, so.
I'd also like to just say, on Kathy's behalf, on your actuary's behalf, the modeling that we've referred to tonight that she uses for this, it has proven historically to be extremely accurate, although we can't predict a recession, we can't predict mortality rates. The modeling has proven for a long, many years to be very, very accurate, which gives us a lot of confidence in this plan.
Oh, you said that they wouldn't allow you to take too much of a cut. Is there anything as far as taking a non-credited year? Are we allowed to do something like that, freeze for a year?
No, once you freeze, you're frozen for a non-credited year purpose. And currently, the way the contribution rate is set up, the question was, is can we just have a non-credited year? We free, temporarily freeze the plan. You run into all kinds of issues with that, because when you freeze the plan, you have to do all kinds of filings, and the government's going to look at that, and you have to justify all these other things. But also, the way we have it set up right now is our contribution rate and what the accrual rate is, is that there is money that's just going solely to fund the balance of the plan, that people aren't accruing any money on that. So we are trying, we're kind of getting some extra money in, in, in our contribution rate. It's already built in. Question in the back?
Yeah, question in the back, sir? Yep.
How is it determined is a ten-percent reduction, twenty-percent reduction, and thirty?
Question is, how is it determined who gets the percentages of reductions?
It just, that's just the way it worked out. What we did was, we looked at everybody's lifetime contributions.
So it's based on total amount of hours of work, or is it based on how much you have to contribute, or how much you have to contribute?
It's the total amount of contributions that have come in, and then we take one-point-three percent of that. If it, if it works out that that ends up being a five-percent cut or a ten-percent cut, it's just a way.
So the people that are getting the four-point-one?
Right, right. So it, but we, what we look at is, we just look at how much money came into the plan in a contribution rate standpoint, and then we take one-point-three percent of that. That's how we figured out what this amount's going to be under the rescue plan.
Is it in the bill?
Yes, yes. In the back?
Have you calculated who's going to lose the most?
The question is, have we calculated who's going to lose the most? Yeah, we, we have the list of how much everybody is making, or how much their accrued benefit is.
Do you have a percentage, like is somebody going to end up losing fifty percent or sixty percent? Is that number in there?
I don't recall off the top of my head, because it's a really large spreadsheet. I believe that it's a fifty or sixty percent cut.
The biggest cut, yes. It's unfortunately sixty percent-ish.
What we're trying to do is, we're trying to narrow the gap with the amount of benefits that people are making versus the amount that people are currently accruing.
So, I was retired five years ago, and what I invested, now that we're going to restore it, am I going to go down to what I had in when I retired to one-point-three percent? Is that what, you're going to change my check to? Am I getting, yeah, say it's a hundred thousand dollars, I'm going to get thirteen or?
The question is, what impact will that one-point-three percent have based on your current benefit?
At sixty-two now, and I retired five years ago.
Right, so you took an early retirement?
Well, I got cancer, so.
Okay, okay. I guess I'm not a hundred, I'm not understanding the question.
Well, I think, I think he's looking at the one-point-three percent as being one-point-three percent of his current benefit. That's not what it is.
No.
I put three percent of my, I got four and a half or whatever percent when I retired, and fifty-seven, you know, plus twenty percent cut. What I want to know is, are you going to base my monthly check at what I had invested when I retired as far as money in my account at one-point-three? Say it's a hundred thousand dollars in a lifetime of work.
Whatever the amount of contributions that came into the plan at the time you retired, we look at that total amount, and we take one-point-three percent of that, and that is your monthly benefit.
So there's no interest adjustment?
There's no.
A hundred dollars as well?
Yeah, if you had a hundred thousand dollars in contributions over your career, one-point-three percent of that is thirteen hundred. That's what your monthly benefit would be.
At sixty-two.
Correct.
So I might take and lose seventy-five percent cut?
Sure.
Uh, yeah, that's, yeah, one-point-three percent if that's what it ends up being. You'll get that individualized statement that'll tell you that, that estimate or that specific estimate.
Not to mention, I mean, hospitalization costs somewhere in someone dollars.
I understand.
So how am I supposed to pay for that? You guys going to allow us to go back to work and not get penalized?
No, we had not included any suspension of benefits provisions there. So you can go back to work and accrue some more benefit, and you'd be getting a paycheck and accrue some more benefit.
I'm going to get thirty-two hundred dollars a month.
I understand, I understand.
On this benefit, or I could just write it out for twelve years and take the other one?
Right.
I mean, I can understand maybe a thirty percent cut, but not seventy-five percent.
So if I thought he was taking?
Probably eleven.
Because they got disabled, and they have to take for a return, they're taking seventy-five percent.
We're not taking seventy-five percent. It's an individual thing, and this is, again, this is something that, once you guys get those individualized statements, then what you can do is, you can contact us and we can talk about that. I can't speak to whatever, anyone's individual benefit.
All of us got a hundred thousand. We all worked forty years, and we got the four percent. Everybody sitting here's got it.
I understand.
So we're all going to get a seventy-five percent cut?
Yeah, if it's, that's what the one-point-three works out to. That's what the one-point-three works out to. I understand, I understand where you're coming from. I do. I do.
I fucking had to pay my bills on thirteen hundred dollars a month. I worked forty-one years. I got the four percent. I paid over a hundred thousand. Bullshit. What a handful of shit. And how do you time? Yeah, this is wrong.
Sir, in the back, you had a question?
Another question?
Okay.
I, I came in late, I thought it was six-thirty. Right now, I make one-point-five percent, and then I pay four sixty-five an hour for the pension to boost it, to make payments. Well, how is that getting changed at all, or is that?
That's just recently been changed to say, the amount that's coming in, we're not doing the non-crediting, we just changed the percentage that is, that you're going to accrue. Ends up being about the same. It's actually, as the contribution rate goes up, the active guys will, will benefit from that, but.
But we'll still pay four dollars, two hundred bucks a week?
Yeah, it's, it's six dollars and sixty, or six dollars and eighty cents, I believe, is what the contribution rate is now.
Mr. Chairman, how can we get away, or how can we keep from letting the government give us a bum steer about having too much money in the pension, and then, and then making us work, work that down? How can we, how can we get too much money in a pension plan?
That is a great question. The question is, how did we, how can we have too much money in the plan? How did the government say you had too much money in the plan?
We have senators, we have congressmen protecting us against this, and look.
And that's really, you're exactly right. You're exactly right. I, I don't understand how the rules were, you can't be more than a hundred percent funded. But that's, that's what, that's what the rules were. Now, the rules in place now are not that, but that doesn't benefit from what happened in the two thousands.
It's not been long then, but it would still been, now we're going to be through a few bad years of relations.
You're exact, you're exactly right.
You're far sighted on the union and the government, and it's a vote of no confidence right there.
Well, the, you were, you were right. The rules in place at the time in the early two thousands, I do not agree with, and they, they were just wrong. But that's what, that's the rules that we have to work with.
Should they all just act and run and do?
Yes.
That way, it's going to happen to you, it's going to happen over and over.
That's right. Thanks, you just showed, if you're fifty-two years old, what you're getting now, what you're going to get back then, that's wrong, it's all false. That's all false.
In what, in what way?
What you showed us, it's all false. Because it's not dropping, it's not dropping like a four percent, down to one-point-three on your figures there. It's looking like, oh, we're just going to take a little bit of a cut.
Well, those are people who probably didn't earn it the four percent.
And we're taking a big cut.
You're not going to hit everyone, and us guys are pushing seventy. You can't, you just can't do that to us guys. We'll lose everything we've worked for. At least, we'll just wipe your ten years out, let it go bankrupt then.
And that is certainly what you can do. Again, you will have the vote on this, and that is something you can do, if you feel that that is the best course of action for this plan, that is in your hands.
There is even no force action here. What more can we be get off asking us to, to just give up everything? We already gave our hours two or three times, the fourteen-hundred, forty hours when they asked.
They gave up their third hours.
Two or three times for retirees.
And retirees, and they didn't help retirees.
Yeah, I was ready to give thirty or forty percent, but I'll be a son of a bitch if I can give seventy-five or eighty percent. I can't do it.
Well, my recommendation then is?
I want you guys to have enough balls to ask.
Well, we're trying to save this plan.
I do, we don't give a shit about the goddamn plan. I worked forty-one years, and I've got to live.
Okay. Are there other questions? Noah?
Yeah, I'd just like to kind of expand or ask you to expand on what's happened in the last eight to ten years or so with the uncredited portion of the pension. So, so that everybody understands, I think most people here understand that everybody has been working for the past eight to ten years in the local, has been a local member. He got the contribution up to six thousand and eighty cents an hour right now. Four dollars and sixty-six cents of that per hour, the working members are getting done of right now in order to try and say, we did our best, so to speak. You know, the working members did our best to try and bolster up the plan. So basically, members working now are receiving a little over, about two dollars an hour credited towards a pension, and paying in four dollars and sixty-six cents an hour uncredited to this pension to try and roll the other plans, so we still have a plan. So, I guess it's not a good question, I just will make sure that, that everybody understands that, if you don't expand on it. We're not asking for bad, old fashioned, anything like that, we're just, it's just information.
You're right, that's, that's the way it's been. Thank you, Noah. Yes?
Are we paying a premium, insurance premium for this PBGC?
Yes, we are. Twenty-seven dollars per person in the plan.
So, we're going broke, they're going broke, and we're sending the money.
That's correct, and they actually won increases in premiums too.
Well, you can't fix dumb and stupid.
That's true. Yes, sir?
Seventy-five percent of this body is going to pay forty-five percent or less in this rescue plan, and the others are going to pay up to seventy-five percent. I don't know how you come up with that.
Well, it's, it's one-point-three percent of contributions. Again, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. I, I don't know what else to say. I'm just telling you what our rescue plan is that we've drafted. You're exactly right. You are exactly right. And that's, that's where we should be pissed off. We should be pissed off because we are at a point right now where you union members are the enemy, apparently. We don't wanna get... We don't wanna get more union work. We don't want prevailing wage. We want the non-union guys. I understand, sir. I understand. I understand that you are mad, and you have every right to be. Every right to be. We wanna fix this? We wanna bail out like they gave to Wall Street? $20 million. It's all this plan needs. $20 million. How much, how much is that to the federal government? Those guys are walking around $20 million in their pockets. Talk to your congressman. Congressman Tim Ryan is the congressman for the Bricklayers 7 Union. I, I think we kinda all know probably how they got in, but you are exactly right. I've spoken with people, I've talked to some staffers from Senator Elizabeth Warren, who is a friend of labor, and I've said, "Bail us out." You bailed out the banks. And their answer was, "We would love to, but consider the environment that we are currently in." You are exactly right. We got an election coming up in November. Let's try to save these plans. Trust me, sir, trust me. I do not wanna be up here telling you guys this information. My goal is to keep this plan going. We have to be able, under the rules, we have to be able to pay or to prove that the plan is going to remain solvent, we're going to stay flat. So we have to, we have to do it to the government when we do our filing. You're exactly right. You're exactly right. I, I cannot argue with anything that you're saying. Talk to your congressman. There are some good ones out there. Okay, good. Continue talking to them. If someone were to come up with an idea that they could finally, that the government would change the rules to say, "We can give you guys $20 million to save," I would run to the, we would run to the bank with that check. We're done. We don't have to worry about it anymore. But until that happens, and in the current environment, I'm not sure that anybody thinks that that's what we're gonna, that what we're gonna get. I understand. I understand. We've talked to them, and there are people on Capitol Hill talking about this, but we just know what the current makeup of things is. Yes, sir. You're right. Thank you. Rightfully so. Rightfully so. Thank you. Other questions? Now, if, oh, I'm sorry. No, this is ready for you to get on. Uh, it has a lot of information, a lot more detail than what, it has the same stuff we talked about tonight, but it's more detail. There's a way to contact, uh, fill out a contact form as well, but no, there's no password. You just, you can get on there and see everything that we've said, plus some.
Yes, it is. Give us about a day to get it on, but, uh, but it'll be, the presentation here tonight will be on that website, so if you need to be refreshed, uh, it'll be there.
Ye- yes, ma'am. Yes, the question is, can you ask questions? Yes, there's a, there's a contact us form. You just fill that out, send it in, and we will do our best to get back to you as soon as possible. We wanna be as transparent as possible with this and answer any questions that come up. Well, we're gonna have, that's a good question. Thank you. The letter's gonna go out, you're gonna be receiving that early July, that's gonna have your individual estimate, and then it's a waiting game. We have to wait for the Treasury Department to say, "Your application is approved or denied." If they deny it, then we're done. If they approve it, then we have 30 days to have a vote. That's when we'll have another meeting, is right before the vote, so we can go back all, through all this and answer any new questions and give you any updates that have happened. That's what the timeline is.
Throughout that period, though, I might add that, um, the website is not something that's going to be static. If we are getting questions from people, it's very likely they will be putting their question and the answer on the website so that everybody can, uh, if you didn't have that question, but you think it was a good one, the answer will be there for you. So throughout the whole process, the website will be an active source of news for you.
Yes, ma'am. In the back? The question was, and that's a great question, and I just totally blanked as you were asking it, because we've talked about this before. The question was, what happens if you have a widow who, say, for example, is age 65, for an example, receiving a benefit? Uh, whose, whose life is that based on for the age 80 restriction? The widow's age, thank you. Whoever's receiving that benefit, it's based on their age. So if the widow is now 80, even though the person retired at age 62, if the widow is now 80, then the widow would not get a benefit cut. It's based on the widow's age, whoever's receiving that benefit at the time of the cut. Yes, sir. 1.3 was what ended up working with keeping the plan flat. For the 30 years. That's what, that's what the rules tell us. The rules tell us we have to go with 30 years. As much as I would like, as much as I would like to not obey the rules, we have to obey the rules under this, or else the plan has a lot of consequences. So we have to, they tell us you have to do 30 years, and the application wouldn't be approved, so that's why we did 30 years. Well, it's not really a penalty. The question, the question is about the early retirement, if someone had gone out at 56 and they had had their benefit reduced because they went out early. It's not a penalty, and that's one thing, that's, that's a great question, because that has come up, other people have asked that before. The benefit is calculated to be, it's called actuarially equivalent, but it depends on the age that you are, because we have, if you retire at age 56, we have to make that benefit last longer, because you're going to live longer, as compared to if you retire at age 62. So the early retirement factors, and then if you have a beneficiary, for example, so if you die, your, your spouse gets 50% or 75% or 100% of the benefit. There's that reduction. Those have all been preserved, those are still going to be in effect. That's still part of the benefit. But it's not a penalty. I understand it feels like a penalty, but we have to make that, that payment last longer because you're getting it earlier. And the statements will show that. When you get those individualized statements, those are gonna be really helpful for you guys, because it's gonna have some very specific numbers on there. So it's not just a general, these slides, it's gonna be something that's gonna show what you are getting, and then a, a very good estimate. Other questions? Sir? Not voting is the same as a yes vote. So an empty ballot or just not voting would be the same as a yes in favor of the rescue plan.
And it passes or fails on a simple majority.
Right, of people who are eligible to vote, and there's a lot of complexity, so, but that's what you need to know. Sir? The question is, what has been our investment return over the years? Very close to what the investment returns have been, just in the market in general. When the market is up, we've done well. When the market is down, we've lost money. Uh, I don't know off the top of my head exactly what the investment return is. Uh, if you wanna, if you wanna speak afterwards, I can certainly, we can certainly find that specific information. Very, very similarly, similarly to other pension funds. We haven't necessarily been losing what everyone else is making and things like that, similar to other pension funds. Yes, ma'am. So the, the question is if it... So the question is, if they... The younger people could, what, what your concern is, is that the younger people would cancel out the retiree vote. I, I, and that's a, that's a valid point. That, that's a valid point. I, I can't, I can't add. I'm sorry? Everybody who is receiving a benefit, so if, so if, for example, sir, everybody receiving a benefit, that's correct. Like, if, if you are alive and you are married, your spouse does not get to vote, it's the person who's receiving the benefit. But a widow is, and, and, and thank you, that's a great question, who gets to vote? It's the people who are, um, entitled to a benefit because they're working right now and they're not actually retired. But if you are receiving a benefit, the person receiving the benefit gets the vote, not the person and his or her spouse. If you are not retired yet, yes, you do get to vote if you are entitled to a benefit. So for ex, yes, yeah. So the active guys do get to vote, they're just not receiving their benefit currently. In the back, please? And thank you, that's a good point. He, the, the point was that there's more retirees than active members. I believe it's two to one right now, or close to that, retirees to actives. Which is part of, which is part of the reason why we, we've run into some problems, is we're just paying out a lot more money and not getting as much in. So the question, the comment is, this is hap, we've, we've, we've been down this road before, the pension has had problems before and it's bounced back. I think, and I think that's a, that's a, a valid point, again. These are all valid points. But the problem is, in the current environment, I don't necessarily see that, because, for example, we've talked with some investment people before who say, "Back in the 80s, you could get a good amount of a return just on fixed income types, type investments." That's not there anymore. The investments are down, you have to make it all in stocks. Again, as we talked about before, the environment of the type of work, and are we getting a lot more people coming into the local, attracting the younger guys to, that they're gonna be able to pay in for a longer amount of time. So I think that's a valid point. I'm not sure that's necessarily the same environment that we're in right now. Oh, you'd have to ask the dist... The question is, how much does it operate, how much does it cost to operate the district council? You would have to ask the district council that. You would have, you would have to bring that up with the district council. That's something we thought about. Can we, can we do this? In a couple of years, if things don't get better, we wouldn't be able to save the plan under the way the rules are now. Now, we could, we could certainly have made the decision, and this was something, doing nothing sometimes is the same as, that's doing something. Can we wait? Can we turn this around? Can this, do it on its own? But the problem is, like it or not, there are rules in place, and what we have to do in order to be able to meet the requirements under the laws. It's a valid point, there's nothing I can say to that, sir. I'm sorry. About 65%. The people who are gonna be receiving the biggest cut naturally are the people who are getting the highest benefits. Again, I, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head exactly what each individual is getting, and we're still frankly running through some of those. Well, the one that we had up here with, with those making about $1,000 a month, was, was your average participant. That's, we picked that out as an average participant. Noah? There's gonna be more detail on the website than what we wanted to... Noah, I'm sorry? That's correct, that's correct. When you're, when you're voting, it's, it's the pen, it's the reduction for all when you vote. Other questions? Okay. Now, I'm gonna stay up here. If anybody has some individual questions, they wanna come and ask me, I, I wanna help people understand at least how we got to this point. I really appreciate everybody coming, I appreciate all of your points, I appreciate how upset you are. I do appreciate that. So, again, thank you for coming. You will be getting those statements early July, and if you have any questions, the website, there is a contact us form that, that you, that will, can get the questions to us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more question? The question is, if, if something, if things really improve, can we retroactively go back and make some of these? Yes, if it improves enough, and we can afford that, and not do a detriment to the plan, then absolutely, we can, we can try to increase people's benefits so they can make up for that. Have to be pretty big turnaround, but, yes, in a, in a perfect world, yes. If you're gonna get a increase? Well, we would let, we would let the participants know that we, that's the change that we made, and hey, everybody's gonna be getting a benefit increase. We would certainly let you know that. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I appreciate your attendance.